And their animal and the way an animal can bring us out into greater contact with our fellow humans. It's a lovely movie. Naomi Watts is, you forget what a skilled and subtle actress she is, especially when, you know, it's a thankless job appearing opposite a dog, but she does well. And the dog is terrific.
Okay. Ty Burr is film critic for The Washington Post and creator of the film recommendation newsletter, Ty Burr's Watch List. Ty, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much, Deb.
And for Ty's entire list, go to our website, hereandnow.org. Do you have an old or unused vehicle you no longer need? Do you want to support public radio? Then donate it to support this station. You can give an unwanted car, truck, motorcycle, ATV, or even your boat. It's quick, easy, tax deductible, and we'll even pick it up from you. Go to radioiq.org, click the Support tab, and drive all the way down to the Vehicle Donation link. Farmer Andrew Mickelson says.
The majority of the people we work with come from Mexico. It just works better to bring people from Mexico because for us, our costs are lower.
Because many of those workers are in the country illegally. U.S. agriculture could not survive without them, and it's why even the most anti-immigrant lawmakers always stop short of real reform. That's on the next On Point.
Tune in weekdays at 7 for On Point.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station, and from BetterHelp, committed to helping clients with issues ranging from relationship challenges and goal setting to grief and depression. Learn more at betterhelp.com-public. And MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com.
It's Here and Now. As the Trump administration's immigration enforcement ramps up, agricultural labor unions say many farmworkers are increasingly afraid to show up to work. Evidence of that is now visible in the sweet cherry orchards of Washington State. Member station KUOW's Monica Nicholsburg talked to cherry growers and pickers who say halfway through the short season, they don't have enough labor to bring in the harvest.
Rosa Hernandez is picking Bing cherries at an orchard in Washington's Wenatchee Valley. She's part of the migrating workforce that follows the cherry season from California to Washington each year, but not this year. Hernandez says many pickers are staying home.
I noticed that's half of what we usually get, so I noticed that right away.
Cherry growers have been struggling with a labor shortage for years, but several said this year is unusually bad. They can count on some locals to show up annually, but there aren't enough to bring in all the cherries in the short harvest that runs from June to August. So they rely on workers like Hernandez, and she says that for people who are in the country without legal status.
Traveling is scary, you know, because you can't even drive around without feeling like you're going to get pulled over.
There haven't been high-profile cases of people being detained making the drive north from California to Washington, and no mass arrests have been reported on farms in Washington. But agricultural workers have been spooked by an ice raid at an Omaha meatpacking plant, another at a New Mexico dairy, and reports of farm raids in California.
So, yeah, I know a lot, I'm not going to name them, but I know a lot of people that have decided not to come.
The Trump administration has sent mixed messages to farmworkers about whether they'll be the targets of immigration enforcement actions. Last month, the president suggested he might help protect the industry, but soon after that, other members of his administration reaffirmed that anyone without legal status could be arrested and that worksite raids would continue. We reached out to the administration for clarity, and in an emailed statement, the White House said that the president is committed to ensuring farmers have the workforce needed to remain successful, but that there will be no safe harbor for those in the country without documentation. Meanwhile, in the orchards of Wenatchee, growers say the labor shortage is impacting how many cherries they can harvest.
We don't know what the outcome is going to be.
Carlos Torres owns PLM Orchards in the Wenatchee Valley. Today, he says he has 35 pickers. Ordinarily, he'd expect to have 60. Torres says the shortage could put him out of business.
It would practically cripple the company. All the chemicals are too expensive, labor is too expensive.
Torres takes out loans each year to cover the costs of maintaining the orchard, and he says he won't be able to pay the bank back if he doesn't get all of his cherries picked.
In the past, when we get everything picked, we sometimes break even, sometimes we have very little profit, but it keeps us going. But if we don't harvest everything, it will put us on the hook.
Torres isn't the only cherry grower dealing with these problems. Eric Zavala is the director of field staff at Bluebird. It's a co-op of about 200 fruit growers throughout the state.
Every grower is picking less and less than the normal. One of our biggest growers, he could not pick 100 bins a day when he could have picked 600 bins. I was like, okay, something is wrong here.
Zavala says some of these farms sell to stores like Costco and Walmart, and that those retailers set the price of cherries and won't pay more. That means consumers aren't likely to see prices rise, leaving growers to eat the added labor costs. We reached out to the companies to confirm, but didn't hear back. There is a visa program designed to help farmers hire seasonal migrant workers, the H-2A, but growers say rules requiring them to house and transport workers make the program too expensive. Here's Zavala again.
And it gets to the point that a lot of growers, that's not even an option anymore.
In a statement, the White House said that it has created an Office of Immigration Policy, which will help employers access and navigate programs like the H-2A. In Washington, cherry country is also Trump country. Everyone agrees that workers aren't showing up, but a lot of growers don't blame the Trump administration for that. They say it's bad actors on the left creating panic unnecessarily. Here's John Foden. He works with Zavala at the Bluebird co-op, and he has his own orchard.
You see a lot of things in social media, especially social media, about raids here, raids there, coming into orchards, taking people off of ladders, putting them in vans and taking them away, but none of that ever happened.
He acknowledges there may have been a handful of agricultural raids that did happen in other states, but he says for every one of those, there's 100 examples of a rumor here in Washington that doesn't actually materialize.
They need to stop with this baloney of ISIS raiding orchards because it's just not happening here in Washington.
While Zavala, Foden, and other growers don't blame the Trump administration for the culture of fear keeping their workforces home, they do want something to change. They say they need an affordable program that allows them to bring in the workers they need legally. For NPR News, I'm Monica Nicholsburg in Wenatchee.
And today on our podcast, Here and Now Anytime, the uncertainty over tariffs and the questions facing American businesses.
How can we commonize parts? How can we talk about alternatives? It's a lot of dialogue and a lot of review of the details and the impact.
We hear from a computer hardware company based in Iowa.
Here and Now Anytime gives you a smart summary of the day's news. You can find it wherever you listen to your podcasts.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Asma Khalid in Washington, D.C.
And I'm Debra Becker in Boston.
I'd like to invite all who desire to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer Thank you and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for July the 8th, 2025. Regular meetings are held on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 6:00 p.m. on the 4th Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. Meetings today are broadcast live on RV TV. Channel 3 will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday at 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangement to participate in any or attend the Board Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn off all your phones, cell phones, or place them on silent. We move to Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Number one, roll call with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
We move to Item B. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda item, fellow board members?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaywood.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may have noticed that we have a four-legged visitor today. This is a dog named Liberty, along with Lieutenant Parrish and Deputy Sweeney, and I would like to propose that we add an item as on our consent agenda, Item E6, which is going to be a request to accept and allocate funds in the amount of $4,593 from the Office of First Responder Wellness Grant Program to the county sheriff's office to take care of Libby and some extra equipment for the dog and for this program that they have. So they thought they would bring the dog over so you could see what this was about, but again, we'd recommend that that be added as Item E6 on consent.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lubick?
No changes, sir.
All right. We move to Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Item 1, recognition of Roanoke County's VDOT Salem District Locality of the Year Award. Richard L. Kaywood will be handling this item. Mr. Kaywood, welcome.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will be up here actually fairly briefly. I'd like to introduce a few of our guests. You all know Dr. Smoot, and we have Ken King, the district engineer for VDOT, along with Anthony Ford and Brian Blevins. But I really thought that for this item, it would be more appropriate for Ken to tell the story, as he will be able to tell it in more detail and introduce some of the VDOT team involved, and then the nature of the recognition that he'll be presenting.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Ken King. I'm the Salem District Engineer with VDOT. It's my pleasure to serve in this capacity in this area, and it's certainly my pleasure to be here today to recognize the great work and accomplishments of your team here in Roanoke County and the great work that they have done. We, the district, Salem District, has put together this award back in 2018, and actually Anthony Ford, who heads up our local assistance program, it was really him and his team's idea to try to identify some criteria through which we could celebrate folks' great achievements. And these are not achievements of a single act or just a single good project. There are a lot of activities that have to take place, but it does represent how important the local assistance program is to VDOT and to the Salem District. By number, it represents about 25% of the total financial investment of the Commonwealth, you know, local projects do, but they exceed 40% by number. So they are in many places all throughout the communities that we live, work, and play in, and they are a big part of us achieving our mission, which includes not only safety and efficiency, but also to support vitality and economic opportunity and quality of life for the Commonwealth. The activities that take place, as I mentioned, are numerous. They involve participating in training opportunities, coordination meetings, completion of certain qualification programs, both with the staff as well as the department overall. And I say the department, the locality. Then quality submittals, including the applications, the plans, and the estimates of being of high quality and caliber and well-prepared. Observations of active work zones, making sure they're in good order and safe for the motoring public. Documentation during construction. As you know, many of the funds we deal with have strings that tie back to our federal government, and there's a lot of requirements that we make sure that they be all in good order for the many reasons that our federal programs have in the support. We have dashboards that both look at on time and on budget, but as I've noted, there's many other things. There is sustained performance that we've identified that looks at locality program over the Commonwealth as a whole that's managed by our central office, and that criteria is also looked at. So it's a very broad application, as well as looking at the size of the program, and Roanoke County is certainly one of those that is engaged in a large number of projects with our district. Most notable, though, over this last year and a half, has been the Roanoke County staff to not only achieve all of these foundational items, but they've moved five sizable projects from design to construction that really is a combined total of more than $20 million, and they are very important projects to this community, the Greenway projects, that, just to note, the Western Roanoke River Phase 1, the Roanoke River Greenway from Blue Ridge Parkway to Explore Park, Roanoke River Greenway at the Parkway Crossing, the Roanoke River Greenway through Explore Park, and then the Glade Creek Greenway Vineyard Park Project. All very active projects within our community that'll connect our communities and keep them being vibrant and certainly enhancing the quality of life that we all enjoy. So I just, I'm here today to certainly celebrate you and your staff and the accomplishments and the great things that you're doing to help us make sure that the transportation dollars and investments that come to the Salem District manifest themselves into actionable real-world projects that improve safety, efficiency, and quality of life for those we serve. So it's also my pleasure here to recognize our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, Dr. Ray Smoot, who needs no recognition, you know quite well, the leadership that he has provided, both with Virginia Tech, as well as the New River and Roanoke Valleys for many years now, and has served as our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, and I'll call him forward to help me in both recognizing this accomplishment and extending the award.
Ken, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, it is a particular pleasure to be here with you this afternoon because we are recognizing significant achievement by Roanoke County, and locally administered projects are very important to the provision of transportation services to our communities. And in this particular case, the projects, as we all know and as Ken alluded to, are related to, most of them to the Greenway, be that the Roanoke River Greenway or the Glade Creek Greenway. So this is a happy occasion, and I am pleased to be able to participate in it. Ken talked about the importance, the criteria, for locally administered projects. I can tell you that while they're all important, nothing trumps on time and on budget. And that record is not as good at the state level as we all might hope, but Roanoke County has done very well with that. And I have appreciated the opportunity to meet and go out and tour projects, at least yearly, with Phil Hall, Richard, Megan. Roanoke County is well-staffed to support projects. That is not universally the case, but it's always a pleasure to come here and celebrate the projects that mean so much to the citizens, not just to Roanoke County, but to the entire region. And the Greenway project, which I know we still have a bit more to do before, is completely through along the river to Explore Park. But that receives a lot of attention, not just in the Roanoke Valley, but in the broader region, and is a real asset to the broader region, so thank you. I have a plaque which I need to present to someone. And I'm delighted to give it back to Megan, who was thoughtful enough to bring it today, but this is, documents the leadership of Roanoke County and the folks within Roanoke County and the administration of these locally managed or administered projects. So thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Right, Amanda, maybe we assemble folks for a nice picture, make your team up and be my folks and have a nice picture with the board.
Should we stand?
We'll do comments after the picture.
Okay. Be good.
They still trying. I think you'll break, you're going to break down, I bet, sooner or later. Start eating. You want to be here? It's all Henderson's fault.
You were supposed to get on your knees, didn't you?
Before everybody takes off, we're going to add comments. We're going to add comments. Sorry, we got, the picture got ahead of us on our comments real quick. Any board members have some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hooker.
I've got just a couple of quick things that I want to say. You know, we do have a fabulous staff, and I know you were saying, you were including us, and there are some small things that we do, but man, we've got a fabulous staff. Megan, all the people in the planning department, I know Richard and his background, we are just truly blessed with people who know how this works. And then Dr. Smoot and Ken King, you all have been so gracious to spend time with us on the buses and go and look at the projects and know what our needs are. Brian, I'm Brian Blevins. I'm just so pleased that, I think we all have you on speed dial, so I'm glad that that didn't count against us in this situation. So thank you all. Thank you very much for this award.
Go ahead.
I also want to thank the teamwork that we have between our colleagues at VDOT as well as Roanoke County staff, but more importantly, Roanoke County staff have become mentors to their commission and some of their new staff down there in the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, which has been recognized by them as well as myself, who's chair of that committee, and we're really going to need to work closely over the next few months analyzing smart scale and what we can do smarter next time to try to get some dollars. And we heard that if we had the same project submitted in round five as we did in round six, we still wouldn't have gotten any projects approved. So we've got to do a deep dive and have a better strategy for the next time, and I look forward to hearing what the TTC Committee at the Regional TPO, as well as Roanoke County staff, come up with working with VDOT, because we can't be sustained in the future with projects. We've got some Greenways to finish, too, and so those will probably come into play, if not in round seven, but in round eight. So keep up the good work. And Brian, you are on speed dial. I call Brian about once a week about something, and he's very responsive, always answers the phone. I never get his voicemail, I guess unless he's at the beach for the summer or for a couple of weeks, but thank you for your cooperation. We do appreciate that. And Dr. Smoot, thank you for being here today, and Ken, your kind words as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Smoot, Ken King, I know how difficult your roles and responsibilities are. You get a lot of headaches and a lot of complaints, so we appreciate this recognition. I know how, I know how difficult it is, and from my previous experience, I know not only in this locality, but other localities, unfortunately, sometimes there's a lot of friction between different localities and the highway department, and I'm really happy that, I think, with what Richard and Megan have been doing for Roanoke County, we've been able to develop a far better cooperative relationship. And I know that's not true for some other counties and some other jurisdictions, and I know everybody likes to complain, and we will, a lot of jurisdictions will blame you because it's all your fault, and it's not. It's a, it's an unfortunate aspect of a very difficult funding problem and how expensive it is to do roads in our Commonwealth. So I appreciate everything that you have done for us and for our citizens, but thank you.
All right, and I'll close. Thank you, guys, for recognizing Roanoke County, and congratulations to Megan, Nathan, and Isaac, and I know David behind you does a little bit of work with you, too. Dr. Smoot, thank you for fighting for our district, our region, you know, at that board level. Any influence and money you can have come our way, it's greatly appreciated. And Mr. North and I hang out with Ken King once a month at TPO, so we're up to date on what really everybody wants in that district. And Brian, I do not have you on speed dial because I've got a good district. The road's got a lot of potholes, but I'm not going to bug you about that.
You just did.
Yeah. Nah, we're in good shape. Thank you all for taking some time in the day, appreciate it, and we'll move on. If y'all want to leave, you can now. We're going to move on to Item D, First Reading of Ordinance. Item 1, Ordinance Amending Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Phil Thompson, Director of Planning, will do the first reading request for the second reading and public hearing. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So kind of give you an overview. As you mentioned, there are amendments to all five articles of the zoning ordinance being proposed. I think as most of you know, you know, when you have an ordinance that's 33 years old, it needs amending from time to time. We have worked with our planning commission on a continuous basis to work on these as issues come up, whether it's to correct state, new state laws, or requests that you all provide or request us to look into with the planning commission. And it's also part of the Planning President's Work Plan to look at these amendments as part of their 2025 work plan. So this is the first set of amendments. We'll work on another set for the second half of this year. But again, amendments generally correct inconsistencies, clarify issues or standards, add or amend definitions and uses, add or amend uses within certain zoning districts, develop or amend standards for existing or new uses, create and revise development standards that might deal with landscaping, parking, signage, lighting, or other development regulations. So for Article 1, there's just one amendment. Yeah, this is a cleanup, you know, it's the first part of our ordinance, our first section of our ordinance, and it's dealing with the official ordinance and zoning map, and basically we're, we don't keep a hard copy of the zoning maps anymore, right? We used to, back in the day, you'd come to our office, and there would be this big set of books that would have all the zoning maps printed. They're all online. They're all in the online GIS. That's our official zoning map. And we don't print copies. Our copy of our ordinance is online as well through Buena Code. So all we are taking is taking the copy piece out and to say the ordinance and official zoning map may be kept in either hard copy or digital form, and we keep it in the digital form. All right, you seen, so we are adding definitions. A lot of these deal with cell phones. So above-ground level balloon test, co-locate, micro wireless facility and small cell facility, the last two coming from the state code, and then amending. that we're going to amend is one, broadcasting tower to be more like just radio and television towers for the most part. And then wireless communication facility, and that's being cell towers for the most part. And then we divided it into three classes, class one, two, and three. And they're just different height levels. So, up to 80 is class one, 81 to 120 is class two, and class three is 121 to 199. And we'll kind of be, make sense here in a second when we get to Article Three. So, in Article Three, that's our district regulations. Where do we allow things to happen? And so, this is really just dealing with wireless communication facilities. Where do we want to allow cell towers in the county? So, if you see there's, at the top, there's different zoning districts, and there's class one, which is up to 80 feet, class two, up to 120, and then up to 199 is class three. So, we are allowing them by right in ag districts up to 120. And then if you want to go above that, you have to get a special use permit. In R1 and R2, you would need a special use permit anywhere up to 120 feet. R3 and R4, which is typically where you would see townhouses or apartments, it'd be by right up to 80 feet, special use up to 120. C1, C2, by right up to 80, and again, special use up to 120. And then also 199. In our district, you'd be able to go up to 120 feet by right and require a special use for anything above that. And in Explore Park, you'd be able to go up to 120 as well, and special use above that. So, currently, we require a special use for anywhere in the county. We don't allow it in residential districts at all, in residential zoning. And so, if you remember, as we went through the 200 plan, there was the one constant thing besides recycling was broadband and cell service. But they wanted, you know, and there's recommendation on dealing with unserved and underserved areas throughout the county that we need to provide these services. So, that also kind of thing. So, again, earlier this year, there was a proposal on Bet Mountain for B2X online for an 80-foot tower. It would now, they would have to go through a special use permit. It would be a by right use. So, part of this is hopefully to also expand broadband accessibility throughout the county. Use and design standards. We amend a variety of standards dealing with accessory apartment, mini warehouse, broadcasting tower, and temporary portable storage containers, and also come up with new standards for wireless communication facilities. All right, for accessory apartment, we're just adding industrial use. And we allow an accessory apartment in most, in C1, C2, up to 50%. It could be that you could have a accessory apartment. And so, for example, we have an example of a gentleman that had a, typically custom manufacturing is considered an industrial use. They wanted to have an accessory apartment with it. Custom manufacturing is industrial use. So, a lot of times, these amendments come through actually applying the ordinance to real-world situations. And we're like, okay, why wouldn't we allow industrial use if we're listing all the other uses in the ordinance? So, small adjustment there. Mini warehouse, this is older regulation. So, we thought it probably should be struck as no door openings for any cubicle shall be constructed facing any residentially zoned property. So, this came up with the Edgebrook property to some degree, even with an internal project, they are technically facing their own residential zoned area. Should be noted that we only allow mini warehouse in C2 with a special use permit. So, there's that process that you could add a buffer to it. There's always a buffer between C2 and a residential district as well, between zoning districts. So, we anticipated this kind of standard was probably a very old standard. It probably doesn't need to be on our books anymore. So, the intent is to strike this standard from mini warehouse. Broadcasting tower, we kind of kept most of it, but we did arrange some of the sections, updated information that was in it. And the application requirements through the state law, we now cannot require propagation map. So, we refer to it as terrain analysis in our ordinance. We kind of struck that out as well. For wireless communication, we deal with small cell facilities, which is part of the state code. You have to allow them up to 50 feet by right. We use the state code for that port. General standards, these are similar that are for broadcasting towers and things that we spell out in our ordinance. And then the application requirements, again, we don't, we don't require propagation maps as part of that. Accessory uses and structures. So, we had a court case that dealt with the enforcement of a storage container being used as an accessory structure. And we were enforcing it as a temporary portable storage container, and that they didn't have the permits to do so. The fact that it had, didn't have a sign on it, it's part of the ruling of why it didn't. So, we're taking the show to a may, or if it may have a sign on it, doesn't have to have a sign. And then we're striking a requirement that deals with VDOT, whether VDOT will allow it. We don't enforce VDOT standards. They're required to do that. So, we're just striking that from the ordinance because we don't enforce it. Last section is Article Five that deals with our development standards. And so, this is really dealing with the accessory use of solar energy. So, you could have ground or pole mounted as an accessory use to a residential home. And this is really for a residential type of, this is not commercial or utility scale or anything. Originally, we just had 1,000 square feet. And typically, when this was done, wait, a couple of years ago, the intent was it was going to be for, okay, within a residential subdivision, right? Want to keep it fairly small, limited. We had a request for greater than this on a 30-something acre parcel, and we had to tell them, no, they couldn't go above 1,000 square feet. So, we thought that, like a lot of things that are in the ordinance that we have changed over time, we would make it a sliding scale. So, the more property you have, the larger you can go. So, an acre or less is 1,000 square feet, which currently is, 1 to 5, you go to 1,500 square feet. Over 5 acres, 2,000 square feet. So, just trying to get, put some scale, some variety in that as well. So, these are the amendments, proposed amendments. The planning commission did hold a public hearing last Tuesday, July 1. There were no speakers spoke on these amendments. The planning commission recommend approval. As you mentioned, this is the first reading. Second reading would be in public hearing would be July 22. So, with that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, let me, on top of my brain, solar energy. So, we're not going to regulate them on roof, rooftops.
That's correct. We do. So, you can, there's no limit that, on roof, you can put them up, and there's no limit. Obviously, there's a carry capacity of your roof, you know, whatever can fit. And you go through the building permit process to get that.
Yeah.
So, that's by right as well.
Do we get complaints from resident citizens about rooftop solar?
No.
Just pole mounted?
We only get complaints. This is so loud. We had somebody who had, wanted to go above 1,000 square feet, and we had to tell them, no.
Okay.
On a 30-acre parcel.
Okay.
And it was like, okay, well, why don't we have a sliding scale range?
Right.
Again, I think the original intent was that this would be for smaller lots on the acre or less size would be 1,000 square feet. But, so, again, like a lot of things in our ordinance, we've transitioned to more of a scale. The larger the lot you have, the more that you could probably do on it.
Right, right. Okay. Ms. Hooker?
I'll let you start first.
So, I am so pleased with this. And I really like the graph. And I don't, I didn't see a page number associated with it where it had the different zonings and if it was special use or if it was by right, whatever page that was. But I really liked the way that you had the different categories of towers. And I really think that would have helped ease some of the pain with extending broadband into rural areas, especially when we have the type of geography that we have and trying to meet all those hills and valleys in some of our more rural areas. Especially, these towers are really important. So, I'm so pleased. I think this was a good solution. Appreciate your good work on it. And I know it took a lot of time on your part, so.
More time than it should have.
So, thank you very much for your good work there.
Okay. Yeah.
Couple of questions, Philip. Follow-up, Ms. Hooker's comment.
With respect to that, I think that breaking it out and by the classes and the chart is excellent. The only question I would have there is, was there any discussion either at the planning commission level or at the staff level for I1 and I2, instead of special use permit, just allow it by right? I guess my thought is, I1 and I2 are so unique. And in an industrial area, that kind of facility generally has a very small footprint in terms of lot coverage. I know you got the tower, and you got the little building accessory box at the bottom. But was there any discussion about just allowing that by right in the I zones as opposed to?
Yeah. We went through with all of them. And I think anything above 120, they were a little leery of doing, you know, currently, you have to get special use today from zero.
Exactly.
And so, it does allow those uses. There might have been some conversation. I think they're trying to be consistent across the board. Obviously, you have the ability to change that if you so choose to in the ordinance, if you want to make it by right. You know, sometimes you think it's an industrial park, but we have a lot of land that's owned industrial, that's one parcel here, one parcel there. So, again, I just think they wanted to allow as much by right. You know, one of the things they did change was in Explore Park, originally it was going to be special use from 80 to 120, 81 to 120. But they wanted to allow that. Again, imagine eventually, as Explore Park develops and wanting communication within the park, we'd want to have power. And obviously, you have to get, go through the park service, but that's a separate process. So, they increased that one to by right to 120. And also, it's kind of consistent with what surrounds, you know, ag zoning surrounds Explore Park. So, it's consistent with the ag zoning levels as well. So, like I said, they did, we probably had a conversation about that. I just think.
I think from a philosophical approach, I guess I prefer having this by right. And I know the history of what we've gone through of the last 20, 30 years. But I think the technology is advancing so much. And I think more citizens don't quite have that same fear level that they once had. And I think, because everybody are using these things, that's becoming less of a headache. My other question, I think, is a follow-up from Mr. Radford's with respect to the solar energy systems. Why wouldn't the broader standards that dealt with overall lot coverage apply to solar systems? So, like, for example, you know, in AG1, you're looking at for your building 20% total lot coverage, 40%. You know, if you're, you have a minimum acre and a half, why wouldn't a solar array just fall into the other calculation for the overall lot coverage?
It does. But it also counts for accessory structure, right? So, if you ever look at our ordinance, there's accessory structure, and then there's the total lot coverage.
But does this make that approach more restrictive?
No. I mean, I think that's how we probably in practice deal with it, right? Is that if you, so, the pole mounted or ground mounted is an accessory structure. So, it would be calculated in, you know, for any zoning district, if there's an accessory structure percentage, it counts towards that total for that parcel. And also, if you had a shed, and then you had this array, we'd count both of this, meaning one, not only the accessory, but then the accessory is going to be calculated in the overall lot coverage as well, right? So, it's, it is considered both. So, again, when you have larger lots, we haven't run into this issue, I guess is what I would say is, we have, it was, they've come up. It hasn't been an issue that they haven't been able to beat the lot coverage requirement. But we also don't want it to be, but so.
I guess I was thinking, if I'm in an AG1, and I got an acre and a half or two acres of land, and I got my house on it.
I think it's probably.
Why don't I put however large a solar array I want to put on, as long as I don't exceed the 40% lot coverage limitation that we have already under, under the development standards?
Yeah. Most likely, the standards are in place for more of the R1 and R2, where you have a house and a building, and then you're putting, you know, how much are you putting? It's probably more to protect the R1s and R2. And I don't think this will become a problem in the ag areas because the lots are going to be a lot bigger. The numbers are going to be, you're not going to beat the numbers.
I guess, David, you're more knowledgeable in this area. I mean, would you see these, these 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, would you see those as inhibiting that kind of development? Particularly if you have a 3-acre or 5-acre?
Right. So, most of the square foot for the panels, the arrays are being designed for the consumption to get to 100%. They don't really want to go over 100%. So, you try to, because of the cost and the payback over time. So, it depends on the size of the house. But you, we would not want to restrict it. But, I mean, the houses are pretty big and, you know.
Yeah. So, again, this is just for the independent solar array. Anything that's on the house, which they could always do, this is within the footprint of the house as it is anyway. So, it's not going to add to the house as it is. So, it's, so there's always that option to put it on the house or a building, right? And it's not going to increase or decrease the lot coverage. This is a separate solar panel array.
I guess I was just looking at it as, I'm probably wrong, but I just sort of see this as the wave of the future. And just like in the past, we had a height limit on towers, and then we've had to come back and increase it. If this is the wave of the future, and more and more citizens are going to be doing that, I just don't want this to be perceived as tying somebody's hands.
Right.
In terms of being too restrictive, that's all.
Yeah. The trend is to put the arrays on the house roof, not a pole. So, I doubt this will get used a whole lot.
Because you saw them, but not a total.
Yeah. So, more on houses on the roofs.
Thank you.
The other thing I will mention is, you know, you all had a utility scale project not that long ago up on Bet Mountain as well. So, our next, one of the things in the next six months that we're going to focus on is utility scale solar and bringing that as part of the ordinance as well. So, just want to mention that since we're talking about.
Where is that? Didn't we, didn't we approve that last year?
Yeah, we did.
Is it built?
It's not built yet.
Not built, okay.
Mr. Shepherd?
The only question I've gotten, this is kind of, on the cell towers, are there any requirements or thoughts for like the residential areas or things like that, like the Blue Ridge Parkway requires? Or when I have traveled back and forth to the beach, which I like to do frequently, I have noticed that cell towers are disguised as trees.
Some are.
And they're also, I think, like on the Parkway, there are ones that look like, what do you call on a farm, the big?
Silo.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for, like the silos.
Right. The one on Bladetown is in a silo.
Yes. So, is there anything that we do, like in the residential areas or anything like that, to allow to where it's not so, such an industrial, obvious tower in the neighborhood?
They always have the right to do that. We don't make it a requirement. We encourage them to use what they call stealth techniques in the design of, especially in closer to residential areas. The other thing is, in the residential areas, they're all going to be special use permits, right? There's not, other than the R3, R4.
Right.
So, in most of the subdivisions in those areas, they're going to have to go through a process. And when we meet with them, that'll be part of the conversation that we have is, okay, can, how can you disguise this? Where is it located? How tall is it going to be? Ideally, it's going to stay in a tree. So, it's just, you know, it's just slightly above the tree level. So, it blends in with the surrounding area. So, we will, any type of special use permit that they got to go through, we'll have that conversation as they, as a pre-application requirement.
Okay. I was just curious. I had not noticed any around Roanoke that were disguised like that, other than near the Parkway.
Correct.
And I see them, like I said, all the way down to the beach. And that's, I was just curious if that was an option.
It is an option, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I could just follow up real quickly, I was really intrigued with Paul's statement regarding the industrial uses and why do we have the special use permit when they are already typically buffered heavily? And there's other precautions to protect the industrial use from surrounding localities. What is the reasoning for the special use permit for the class three?
120 feet is what they were wrestling with, the height, over 120 feet.
Right.
I just, I think they were just trying to, you know, right now, you have to do it no matter what.
Right.
Right. I just think they, you know, 120 feet, I think, was okay. You know, some, in the industrial area, you do have unlimited height requirement. You know, if you build a building industrial, there's no height restriction, you know. And so, you know, they think 120 feet was appropriate, but maybe they want to look at it above 120 feet.
I guess, too, there are some industrial sites that have neighbors that aren't necessarily fellow industrial users, commercial, maybe in some rare occasion, some residential. But I'm just trying to think about the overall theme of the property is pretty heavy typically.
Can be. But again, this is also I1.
Right, right.
Right. So, if it was just, we were talking about industrial parks, where all the land surrounding is industrial, that'd be one thing. There's a lot of property.
Well, I guess too, there are some industrial sites that have neighbors that aren't necessarily fellow industrial users, commercial, maybe in some rare occasion, some residential. But I'm just trying to think about the overall theme of the property is pretty heavy typically.
Can be, but again, this is also I-1.
Right.
Right. So if it was just, we were talking about industrial parks where all the land surrounding is industrial, that'd be one thing. There's a lot of property zoned industrial. That's one parcel here, one parcel here. That's, you know, we were looking at, the conversation we had earlier potentially about the project up at the Moose Lodge.
Right.
If you look, go along that road, there are several properties along Catawba Valley Road going up to that site that are one parcel zoned industrial.
Yeah.
Right next to AR.
Good point.
So if you, so if you, that's, that's the issue you have. You're going to have these isolated pieces of I-1, and therefore, I think that's also part of the reason for the special use. You can review it on a case by case basis.
That's good. That's good. You sold me on that.
All right. All right. Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading and public hearing for July 22nd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
We move to item E, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the Board to be in routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt all matters on the Consent Agenda?
Move the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
We move to item F, Citizens' Comments and Communications. This time has been set aside for Roanoke County residents, county property owners, and county business owners to address the Board on matters of interest and concern. I do have one member, one citizen signed up to speak today. Person that will be speaking, each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time has ended. While the Board desires to hear from all, we ask speakers refrain from repeating comments already made by others. We don't have that issue today. So today, I have a citizen by the name of Doug Blankenship. Welcome. Come on up to the podium.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Doug Blankenship. I live at 4,006 Concord Place here in Southwest County. I was born, raised, and retired here in Roanoke. And I met with Mr. Mahoney about a month ago, and he suggested I come and share with the Board my concerns about these tax increases. In doing some research through the Code of Virginia, it's my understanding that the real estate section property should be praised at 100% of value, but the tax burden should not be more than 101% of the previous year's levied taxes unless approved at a public hearing or a referendum. My apologies if either one of those happened. To my knowledge, they haven't. This is intended to mitigate the impact on taxpayers. To accomplish this, the rate should have dropped from 104, 100 to approximately 96 cent per 100. In '23, our taxes was over 7%. '24, they went up 7.9%. And this year, they went up 10.4%. And just as a citizen living on fixed income, I just, it's hard to swallow these type of We're seriously considering whether or not we can continue to live in Roanoke County facing these type of increases every year. In regards to the personal property, I learned that the Commonwealth reimburses the localities for the first 20,000 of the value on vehicles. And I would just, even though it's not a Q and A session, I would love for someone to be able to give me an explanation why in 2022, the value of my truck was 20,250, taxes was 150. '23, it dropped to 16,5, but the taxes went to 271. In '24, it also dropped 15,3, but the taxes went to 312. And then, I'm sorry. And then, in this year, it went back up to 20,800. I just don't understand how something is supposed to drop in value, how the taxes keep going up and up and up. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Blankenship, we usually don't do a question and answer at the time, but if you want to hang around, we have staff people that can answer your questions for you, though. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when Mr. Blankenship and I met last month, I did copy some of the information he provided me and forwarded it, particularly with respect to the personal property tax billing, to the Commissioner of Revenue. And I'll, I'll follow up with.
Okay.
With Commissioner to make sure Mr. Blankenship gets a response.
Appreciate it. Thank you again. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, we'll move to item G, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file reports that have been included with the agenda under item G?
Move the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to remind my colleagues that under G2, our running debt total is now up to 228 mil.
Is that all?
Well, it's only getting a little bit higher after we finish the school projects.
Memory noted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
We move to H, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Ms. Shepherd, you're first.
How did I get so lucky today?
Well, when you went away, that's why.
Okay, well, that's, that's fair enough. The only thing that I've got today is, I just want to remind the citizens in the Benton and Mount Pleasant area that the East Roanoke River Greenway feasibility study, and they're having a community meeting, two of them this week, one tomorrow at the Charles R. Hill Community Center, also known as the Senior Building. And that runs from 5 to 7. And then on Thursday, it's going to be at the Explore Park Visitor Center, running from 5 to 7. And we would love for you to come out and take a look at what's going on here. There's also a survey available at www.roanookcountyva.gov backslash E R R G gap. So if you would like to take the survey regarding that, it is out there. But that's all I've got for today, is just reminding of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. North?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. On June 26th, I chaired the Transportation Planning Organization meeting for the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission with invited speakers Ronique Day and Brooks Jackson from VDOT in Richmond and the Office of Intermodal Planning to go over Round 6 SMART scale results. The Roanoke region in the Salem District did not receive any funding in Round 6. Moreover, I asked the question, would any of those projects receive funding in Round 5, two years ago, before the metrics were changed in Round 6? And was told, no, we would not have received any funding then either. Discussion then was centered around how the region and the TPO can score better in future rounds by filing for smaller dollar projects that may score higher. In other words, break down the large corridor projects into smaller pieces, similar to what the Richmond District did when their average submissions were 26 million a year. While we are thankful for the larger funds for I-81, those state needs result in a lower district grant pot of money for our community projects. When 81 is complete along the Roanoke I-81 corridor, we'll see the district grant pot appreciate. Staff at the TPO and regional committee members will begin analysis for Round 7 strategies. This is very important, and this is going to be starting in August. I was disappointed we wouldn't have a July meeting, but vacations took precedence. We need to make sure that we are successful in our next round, or we will not get any money for Greenways or anything else in the future. We're going to have to also not only work amongst ourselves, but we're going to also have to caucus by virtual meetings with VDOT and the folks that came to speak to us so they can help us through this process. I've also asked Commonwealth Transportation Board Member Dr. Ray Smoot to caucus with the three other districts in the state that got no money also, to see what he could learn from them. And he is going to be doing that on July the 15th, when they meet in Winchester at the Commonwealth Transportation Board State Meeting. On July 2nd, the Air Service Task Force met at the Regional Chamber offices to discuss next steps in addressing regional support for the airport and facilities and runway improvements. Going forward, we will be asking the General Assembly and local leaders for $5 million for a study. Yesterday, Chair Radford and I toured the renovation at Cundip Schools renovation project. It is looking very good, and it was a very organized pre-meeting as well as a walking tour. And I think we're all going to be looking forward to when that's complete one day. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. North. Ms. Hooker?
No comments today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney?
No comments.
Okay. Got a couple to run by, everybody. Roanoke County Planning is, has a webinar for a housing market analysis study. You can go on Roanoke County's website under the County Planning and Register. It is scheduled for Monday, July 14th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30. So it's, it's more of a virtual Zoom, go in, click in, and participate in that. And basically, Roanoke County has initiated a housing market analysis study to identify housing needs in the county and, and inform program, policy, and development recommendations for meeting these needs. So if you're interested in that, go to our website. Couple of months ago, I took a couple of calls from Windsor Hills District citizens that were concerned about Roanoke County Public Schools initiating the dollars for a field turf over at Hidden Valley High School. And I want to kind of address that from the perspective of performance. From '08 to 2012, my kids, three kids participated in Hidden Valley varsity sports for those five years. And trying to play on that field that they're going to replace for field turf, I would say it is, it needs to be done. I wish it would have been done 10 years ago, because the cost would have been a lot lower. So I was trying to rationalize with that citizen who also had soccer players. So that field was well described in their, in the board meeting by Cheryl Fuchani, the school board member for Windsor Hills. That field is overused. When it rains and people try to use it, students try to use it, it just gets compacted and beat up. And the, the field turf is becoming a higher standard for better performance in high school sports. Yeah, there's a cost to it, but it also will prevent injuries. There's also, during those years, I refereed high school soccer, and I was out there tromping around in it myself on that field. So while it stings the wallet for our citizens, I think it's much needed. It'll help our competitive level for that high school, along with the other three high schools that have field turf. Glenver, Northside, and William Bird all have field turf. So I tried to help that citizen understand the need to do that, and not sure I was successful, but anyway, I wanted to report that, to let everybody know that. At this time, we'll move to item I, Close Meeting. I move to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to conduct the annual performance evaluations of the county administrator and the county attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
The Board will now recess to the Board's conference room for the closed session.